Okay, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Axon County Commission Meeting for February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could please stand and join Mr. Forma for our invocation this morning?
Welcome.
Thanks for.
Morning, welcome to you. Off my script, I want to thank you for being here. If you ever get tempted to pray about, let's have the good old days. After a presentation last month by Steve Schartier about one-room schools in Axon County. I've been doing more research on that and I discovered in nineteen forty-five, the county commissioners in each county were mandated to appoint a committee that would reorganize the schools. And we started eliminating one-room schools in nineteen forty-six. It was so emotional that the first chair of that board that the county commissioners had appointed resigned. But the county commissioners had to stand behind it. So don't pray for the good old days. But today I want to encourage you with words from the Book of Daniel. The man Daniel was past eighty years of age and about to be made the Prime Minister of the Persian Empire when his political opponents forced the king to put Daniel into a cage housing lions. His opponents expected that to be the the death of Daniel. But he was protected in the cage. After Daniel was saved from the lions, he learned that angels work in the background around government leaders. Let these two verses speak to us today. Daniel ten nineteen says, and he said, oh, man greatly loved, fear not, peace be with you, be strong and of good courage. And he spoke to me and I was strengthened and said, let my Lord speak, for you have strengthened me. And also in Daniel twelve three, and those who are wise shall shine like the brightness of the sky above. And those who turn many to righteousness like stars forever and ever. Let us pray. Father, thank you for being mindful of our governmental and political affairs. We rejoice to read how you strengthen and encourage the Daniel of old. Now please encourage and strengthen these county commissioners as they govern our county. Give them wisdom to make bright and shining decisions. May they act in the right ways. May they censure leadership from behind the scenes at all that they do. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hey, public comment.
See, that'll be your chance.
Yeah. I know they hit home with me today too. That's good. Um. Okay, public comment. Seeing none. To curable of the minutes. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from last February twentieth of two thousand and twenty-four?
I moved to print minutes.
Okay.
So I got.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Mr. Comments, Mr. Arivas.
Oh, probably off guard there. I don't think I have any right now.
Okay.
I don't think I do either.
I also do not this week, so. Um, new business, Will Lawrence Guidance Center, two thousand and twenty-five budget appropriation. Welcome.
Uh, I'm done.
I didn't think so. I didn't think so, but has you you gave us separation last year. Remind me your name, sir.
Jerry McDonald.
Jerry McDonald.
And I've been given information for about seventeen years.
Come on up. Yeah, come on up.
Sure. And I'm expecting Dr. Warren's. Here any minute, but but I'll go ahead and talk about the budget. He wanted to talk to you about the contract that the guidance center normally signs with the county commissioners to you know, just provide services. But we're very thankful of your support throughout all the years. And our request at this particular time is to remain funding at the current level. And we had the most profitable year in our history last year. You know, if you looked at my financial statements, you know, you probably noticed that. But we transitioned July the first to what is a instead of being a community mental health center, we're now certified community behavioral health center. And we had some federal grant money to help us make that transition. They paid a lot of the salaries of the type of people that we had to hire. We had to hire more than a few nurses and some, you know, mental health professionals. And we now have teams, mobile crisis teams that will go visit people in their homes rather than having to go to the emergency room or to the police station. And most of those people don't have insurance, you know. And so, you know, it's very expensive to provide those those services, but it is a requirement. And I believe you're probably aware, you know, we also began last March with a crisis stabilization center. You know, which is located at the old Cushion Hospital in in Leavenworth and most of those people, when they show up, they don't usually show you their insurance card, you know, I mean, you know, th- these are the type of the police deal with and so we do have, you know, it will be interesting to see this year, although we're still projecting a the substantial profit, you know, for two thousand and twenty-four. But and you know, you're, you know, I did provide you with a Atchison, you know, the Atchison location here did very well this year, this past year as well. And you can see, you know, that they have, you know, nearly a two million dollar payroll there. And we we have been renters of, I can't remember our location, who moved out of there back, you know, probably thirteen, fourteen years ago. And Dennis bought that building and we signed a long-term lease, you know, and so we contribute to the local co- community in addition to all the services that we provide and and the money that that you have historically given us enables us, you know, people that don't have any insurance or they, in many cases, if they can't pay their deductible or their copay, they can go in and see a psychiatrist, or not a psychiatrist, but a psychologist or a therapist. One of the things that we're seeing, and this is especially down in Johnson County, is highly credentialed therapists don't accept insurance anymore. So you, if you want to see a psychologist, you have to be able to pay cash. And there's a significant number of people that are doing that. But they do can go to the Johnson County Mental Health Center down there. And they provide, you know, the same services as we do, so.
Is that because of poor reimbursements and insurance companies? Is that what's triggered that?
That and a lot of these psychologists have opened their own practice, private practices, and they just don't want to fool with billing. You know, the reimbursement rate, you know, like Blue Cross Blue Shield is very good. Medicare is not so good and things like that, but you know, I I think they just don't want to deal with that, you know. So.
I can relate.
Yeah. But subject to your questions and I anticipate the question that if you're making that kind of money, you might need our money anymore. And that is entirely possible in the future. You know, we have a contract and I can't, you know, with the, we have an Atchison Academy is what we call it in the school here, and we have a contract with them. And they reimburse us for our losses. But with the new rate, this will be the first year. It's entirely possible that they won't owe us any money at the end of the year. And so, you know, that is a possibility going down the road, but we're not exactly sure right now, so.
You.
That's Dr. Warren.
Yeah, hi, Dr. Warren. I was saving that question for the end, actually, so thanks. Because that was one of the things that stood out to me. First of all, the mobile crisis teams that you said, in lieu of police officers or emergency room. How does your team become aware of those circumstances? Do they work? Because a lot of times they'll come into like the nine-one-one center if someone's in crisis or needs help. Or how does that get vetted to know, hey, we need your team versus sending PD or or SO?
Dr. Warren's could better answer that than me.
Okay.
Because he's deeply involved in co-responder and, you know, how all that works, so.
Okay, and then, yes, so back to the financial then with you. Because that was one of the things that were standing out to me as you were talking about your most profitable year, substantial profits. You know, still on track for substantial profits in two thousand and twenty-four and all the things. I'm, I believe you're aware that when we fund our appropriations, it's it's tax dollars, so it's from the pockets of the people. So that was one of the things in looking at your financial statement for your net worth is like, wow, like you guys are in good shape. So kind of curious if the appropriation from the taxpayers is is truly needed still, so. Didn't know if you have any other input on that. I assume you're, you have a futuristic breakdown of what your your goals are and even though you've had a profitable year and sounds like another one.
One of the questions that you asked me was, do we have cash reserves? And with that year, my situation is pretty much the same. Pretty much, we've always existed by billing primarily Medicaid and, you know, the mental health reform model that established CMHC's Community Mental Health Centers back in the sixties. They knew that Medicaid would be one of the primary sources, that with state and federal aid and some county aid. But so I'm making that money, but I'm really in the same position. I have about three months of, you know, in other words, like if if we stop billing, I would have about three months of cash, you know, to pay payroll and things like that, so. That hasn't really changed because one of the things that's happened, our payroll, we've added seventy employees. And we increased salaries so that we could attract nurses and APRNs, you know, nurses that are prescribers and credentialed psychologists so that we could eliminate the wait time for people waiting to see a therapist. So I'm making more money, but I'm in the same boat because I got more people. And it's just like my workers' compensation premium doubled because I had more people. And so.
Well, so as far as the cash flow, so you got grant funding, you're, you've got more teams, see more people, so you've got more billing going on for those who did build. Now, how much of that's a bubble where, you know, some do-gooders say, we're gonna do all this funding and three years from now legislature says, no, we're not gonna do it anymore. I mean, how how much risk are you with that fluctuation in your government sources of funding and all that? Is that is that a big factor?
I I I think I think it depends on you know, who controls the House and Senate, you know, because most of this is federal money. And I think the Democrats pushed it through because this stuff was supposed to happen in the sixties, all these teams. And, you know, they saw an opportunity to make it good, but but I think about that all the time.
Yeah, but it's also been a big increase in mental health issues, so I don't, it's probably more of a bipartisan issue than it used to be, I would guess.
That's true.
Maybe I'm not right on that. So I guess where I'm going is so, for example, we would reduce our amount of funding because you're doing better on funding, but in three years or four years, you come back and say, well, it's all changed now. I need more help from you guys. I mean, that's that's what I want to avoid is that. This kind of thing, so.
Well, didn't the, it changed a lot at the state level because they used to have a lot of beds that they basically closed down statewide.
Yes.
And it basically got pushed down to the county level. That's the reason we needed the stabilization center. Am I correct? I mean, so, I mean, I don't know how your federal versus state is too. I don't think the state maybe is funding as well as, I mean, they.
Federal money come through the state, though, and then they, yeah, they they decide who gets what, so to speak, yeah.
And we're still way down on the state beds, correct?
Yeah, the the future is very turbulent right now. So we have a four-point-two-million-dollar grant that's coming to a close. And then here in the next couple of years, we'll have a one-million-dollar grant that's coming to a close. So we have a lot of grant money that will be going away a hundred percent. Now, with our new structure of the CCBHC, revenue looks good right now, but we have not fulfilled our obligations as of yet. We've got a lot more hiring to do. And so I'll give you an example. We need to get to a point where someone contacts us and we give them an appointment within ten days without fail. Now, if any of you guys have had any interactions with the guided center, sometimes we're able to do that. Sometimes there's been a waitlist that's been significantly long. But eventually, someone who's from the city of Atchison or the county of Atchison is gonna have to call us and then be given a an appointment within ten days without fail. It's gonna require a lot more hiring, a lot more. And a lot of the, and a lot of these positions don't cover their own costs. And then something else that's going on at the same time is the uninsured has had a one-hundred percent increase over the last fifteen years. But funding for the uninsured has not increased at all. So that's all to the point of there is some deception in the money right now. And I can't tell you what the states can do during the next couple of years because things are changing very rapidly.
Is the Guidance Center a part of the Atchison Community Foundation? Do they?
Yes.
Fund, okay.
Yes, and I I I want to say that I included it, you know, we had contributions from our annual fund drive, you know. People contributed there and they matched, yeah, so. We've, we've been in there at least three years, you know, so.
And then the Crisis Stabilization Center in Leavenworth, you said it opened last March, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you know how many like, do you keep track of how many people you're helping? And because I know several counties all pitched in to help, you know, get it up and going. And we kind of talked through those numbers preliminary of like, this is what it looks like, this is what it should. Are you guys keeping track of any numbers as far as how you're contributing back to the counties and taking care of the people from from there?
Last I checked, and this was in mid-January, so the numbers have changed, but we we saved three hundred hospitalizations from going elsewhere on two hundred and thirty-eight unique patients. So obviously, there's some repeats in there. But those are individuals that otherwise would have had to go to Kansas City, Topeka, Missouri, you know, those types of places for their hospitalization.
Do you have that split out versus like if the patient's from which county or?
I wish. I I knew that was gonna be the follow-up question. We are working on our data and hopefully by next year, we're gonna get our data to the point that we can respond to questions like that, but very reasonable. We know a lot of them are from Atchison County, but I can't give you the exact number.
Okay.
And then if you could speak a little bit on my question about the mobile crisis teams and how the need is determined and.
Yeah, so this, that's also a work in progress that's changing. So in Leavenworth, this is where it is mostly developed. Two thousand and twenty-four is needs to be the year where it comes to Atchison and Jefferson County. So it's far less than a year old, which is why it's kind of a, it's kind of a baby down there. It's not because we're neglecting Atchison, Jefferson County. It's just we're trying to trial-run these things in Leavenworth and expand them out to all three counties. But the way we are working down there is we have been having to bond very closely with our police department chief kitchens and with our sheriff, Sheriff Dedeky. And so what we have done is we've worked with Atchison Community, or not Atchison, although I've worked at Atchison Community Corrections too, but Leavenworth Community Corrections. We found grant funding for a jail liaison who's working in the jail. And we have kind of gone at risk with a money-losing position, but a co-responder who's going to respond with Leavenworth Police Department. A lot of this is grant-funded, a lot of this requires strong relationships. I'm just starting to meet, I've met with Sheriff Lori. Still need to meet with the police chief to develop those relationships to get that that grant funding. But the way it works in Leavenworth is if a call comes in on the nine-eight-eight line, so the mental health line, that is front and center for our mobile crisis. Our mobile crisis is the primary responder. And if our mobile crisis gets out there and needs the help police department, then we certainly will access it. But that's not true for nine-nine-one-one, nine-one, and this is working with the police chief. He does not want us going. He's like, no, don't. But we've got a co-responder now and they go out stabilize the situation and they see if they can hand it off to our mobile crisis at that point. So it's all in conjunction with a lot of communication.
Nice.
So you guys get called in sometimes and have to stage like, like second line of defense, so to speak, like whether it's solid, whether it's stabilizing the situation, or it's more like may apprehend somebody and then they get hold of you to meet with them?
All the above, but I think one of the biggest things, I mean, everyone focuses on maybe we can be out there when the lights are flashing and we're mental health, blah, blah, blah. That doesn't come up as much as what the police department was really struggling with is when a situation starts to blow up with a family. It's the ten calls within a week. And so what we've found even more beneficial has been, even if we miss that first call and they handle it appropriately. Then we jump in and go out to that house and try to make it so the next nine calls don't happen for the police department.
As you see in the media, it's like a lot of push-to. And so many cities are saying, oh, you know, those folks right there on the front lines, and I'm going, that seems dangerous. I don't know.
Well, we have different needs of different, like, for instance, I'll just give you an example. I don't know. I think Sheriff Lori probably agree, but the sheriff's needs are different than the police chief's needs. We found that out when we were talking to him. Police chief really would like to have some co-responder and some closer to the front line.
Okay.
And the sheriffs really said, no, don't worry about that. We don't need that. We need help in our jails. Who, that are starting to look like a mental health unit themselves, you know? They want treatment going on in the jails and that's, I have reached out to Katie Sparks, I believe, with Atchison P D Corrections and Sheriff Lori. And we're gonna need some grant funding to this, but we want to explore some treatment in the jail to help help them out.
Awesome.
So long-winded answer, do sorry about that.
No, I appreciate it. No, it's, yeah, no, it's very appreciated because that makes sense and we all know the needs there. It's just how to implement it, so thank you for that.
Certified program now that you guys are part of, is that, does that have a sunset or what's, how is that set up with state?
It is a it is a replacement with a CMHC system.
Okay.
And so there, you know, there is no language that I know of that it's.
We continue to be licensed as a CMHC and there are benefits to that. I testified just a couple of weeks ago in front of the Health and Human Services Committee. Trying to tell them, because they were gonna make CCBHC go competitive, which is basically all comers, could be a CCBHC. I was testifying against that and I was trying to say, you know, there's something to the fact that by our CMHC license, and you have a catchment area. So when I want to provide better treatment, it's always thinking of Leavenworth, Atchison, Jefferson County. I don't think of any other counties. And that's why it's always going to be. Some of these other competitors, which have already moved into Leavenworth or come across the state line from Missouri, are just, just increase their profits through expansion. Expanding wherever they can expand.
For the sake of expanding.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, it's because yeah, well, I won't go into it. There's financial reasons why if you expand, you can get, you can give yourself a raise. Versus when we think expanding, we think, what are the populations in Atchison County that don't come to us for treatment? We gotta find those people and we gotta treat them. That's how we expand, but it's within the county. And I think that's a lot more attractive and provides a higher quality of care than if we wanted to go across the river into Missouri or so. I wouldn't know what I was doing, but you know, we're not gonna do that. And they are, it loo- looks like that bill's gonna pass, but they only did for a three-year provision. So that's another example of why this forecast is so cloudy. Is that in three years from now, if they decide to make the whole thing competitive, it's it's gonna be wild.
But no one wants to compete for the clients that don't have any Medicaid or insurance, you know what I mean?
I worked with, you know, Steve very well, so he's, he's helped me learn, you guys have more acronyms and letters and things in your field than anybody else, I think, in the mental health area, so I've been trying to figure all the alphabet out, so.
I I brought his, I brought his clinic up in front of the committee. And the reason I did was is because I'm not against FQHCs, which is the physical health CCBHC. It's kind of like our twin over on the physical health side. I told them we have two counties with a story of two FQHCs. We have here, the Atchison Free Clinic, as it used to be, that's always been focused on the the most underserved of the county. And that's, it's not profitable for them to do that, but that's what they've been focused on, is what does the county need? We feel very close to that clinic. We are trying to bond with them as much as possible, plant liaisons neither. We're trying to grow as close to them as possible because their mission and ours sync up. Leavenworth County, we have a Missouri-based FQHC that came in and bought up two profitable pediatric practices. Now, now basically owns all pediatrics in Leavenworth.
Wherever.
And like, it's just a completely different focus, so.
Right.
Yeah, Stevie's clinic is awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I rambled on that. But I do feel strongly about his clinic. His clinic is great.
Okay, and you had submitted an agreement for services?
It's just a repeat of last year's agreement.
Okay.
I don't remember having, signing that before.
Yeah, I don't either. So that's why I was just wondering if if you had drafted that and sent it, because it came across to us.
I think I sent a version that was signed.
Yeah, well.
And then I sent a version of his word that could be manipulated.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So I will keep that in here. And I think that answers the questions I had. I don't know if you guys have other questions, Gordon, or.
And that's just for our CMHC licensure.
Okay.
So it's just, so we're not trying to pull, we're not trying to do anything weird with it, it's just.
On the Crisis Stabilization Center, how are the numbers about where you thought they were gonna be? Is it full or, you know, how?
The Crisis Stabilization Unit, they're celebrating their first anniversary, so I preface that by saying, you know, they're not where they, where I want them to be yet. We're on our second director. That's a good thing. It's been an improvement. But we are actually continuing to meet with them about accepting a wider and wider variety of patients as they get more experience. So that's another thing that I hope a year from now is that it has grown in strength to the point that then I'm really going around all of our community partners saying. it has grown in strength to the point that then I'm really going around all of our community partners saying, send people there because we can take care of them. There's some restrictions by licensure, you know, they have to be, patient has to be voluntary, has to be an adult. Uh, that unit gets very concerned about whether someone's medically stable or not. I try to put their minds at ease, you know, because I'm family practice and psychiatry's board certified. So I'm like, just accept. Uh, and we're still working on that.
Yeah, tough situations when you're over medicated.
Well, or they come in with a physical health problem or
Yeah.
Uh, a drug is on board, an illegal drug that's on board. They worry about the medical stability of that.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you guys very much for coming this morning and.
Thank you.
The last thing that I will say is all of the county's support enables us to have Dr. Warren's. I mean, a lot of the centers in the state don't have a psychiatrist. They have an M D. It prescribes psych drugs, you know, but we, you know, we're one of the few that have a our own child psychiatrist, so. But thank you once again.
Yeah, thank you guys very much.
Mark.
Yeah.
Well, and now that we're starting in on budgets, uh, in the past, we've had a sheet and it would have the everything listed to then uh, what what we gave last year and then a blank.
I have it.
Okay.
Ready, if you guys would like a copy.
Yeah, anytime when you just so.
Sure.
Appreciate that.
Hey. Well, so we have fifteen minutes, so I didn't think we probably wanna do the bid openings since the times, but if you wanted to do your department.
Here's one of the guys for the bid opening. The other guy already called and asked on one of them, and I think it said ten thirty on what we had sent out.
Oh.
Um.
Did it?
Honestly, I asked yesterday.
You're fine. Um.
I have all that stuff, friend, sorry.
It says ten forty five on our agenda, but if they're here and you're comfortable on.
Well, let's see what it says on the The only one I'm worried about is the oil.
The solicitation, I don't think it said anything.
Probably did.
Um, it just says bid responses will be acknowledged and read into record at bid opening, which will occur on February twenty seventh during Atchison County.
Yeah, so we can just go ahead and do those.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and I think that.
Because there's only one for striping and paper oil.
Okay.
Then on the striping.
And that's what you're.
I don't know who I got, but I did contact the local guy personally.
Okay.
At his email address, sent it to his email address. So if they did not participate, that was taken care of.
Okay. So do you wanna do the striping or put striping first?
Yeah, we can do, we, we can do the striping one first, just like it says.
Okay. You want it or did you?
Thank you. No, that's fine. This is a bid opening for paint striping along the edge of the road. And uh, there's approximately twenty miles. We asked them to bid per unit price, which is per gallon of white paint. And it's twenty five dollars and thirty seven cents from straight lines striping from Grand Island, Nebraska. That's the only bid we have and they've done it last year for us. So I would say I would recommend that we just go ahead and.
As compared to last year.
I would have to look, but I mean, there's probably not gonna be anybody else bid, but if you want me to, I will. We can wait till next week.
I'm good.
Okay. Okay.
Straight line striping, that unit price was twenty four seventy seven.
Oh, dollar. Yeah, difference.
I really like that'd be a lot bigger difference.
Well, they do a lot of the counties around here, so we kind of fit in with while they're here.
Um, I will make a motion to approve straight line striping um, to do our twenty twenty four paint striping per the bid opening of twenty miles and a per gallon rate of twenty five dollars and thirty seven cents. Do I have a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Thank you, Joe.
I'm gonna do the oil. This is a road oil bid for chip and seal and approximately a hundred and five thousand gallon is what we bid, and this is from Ergon. And it is two dollars and ninety eight cents a gallon delivered. Like I'll run it from Vance Brothers. And it is two dollars and seventy four cents a gallon. So that would be my recommendation to go with Vance Brothers at two dollars and seventy four cents a gallon versus delivered versus Ergon at two dollars and ninety eight cents.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, do you spec out the oil, like to make sure the product?
It's that we give them the product.
Okay, perfect.
CR CRS one H P, so they're bidding the exact same.
The exact same oil.
Yes.
Perfect.
And the paint is the same way. When we send it out, it has its own spec so that we're bidding apples to apples.
Awesome. When they deliver that, as far as logistics, they just, they just bring a trailer in and you work out of the trailer for a while?
Adam is from Vance, so what they do is they will bring a semi trailer load if we need it. And or three or four a day, we tell them where we're gonna be. We pump off onto our truck. And and spray the oil. And we can also, if we need two thousand gallons. Sometimes we'll take our own truck down to Vance Brothers and we will load our own truck. And that's also where we get our uh, oil for our turf hatcher. But no, they did, they they deliver it to like, say we're at Morton Road, we give that where the day before. How many trucks we need and they will have them at that location when we need, okay.
Awesome. Okay. I will make a motion to approve Vance Brothers for our twenty twenty four road oil bid opening um, for the chip and seal, a hundred and five thousand gallons um, with a price of two dollars and seventy four a gallon delivered. Do I have a second? Sorry. Okay, then move to seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
Yes, thank you, Alice. Do we have any more time for department update?
You're still good.
Okay, so department update, the uh we are working on two ten and woods and and two seventy fours uh, putting in tubes. Or started ditching on uh, two seventy fourth, if you wanna look at that when you go, it's it's done. We've done a half a mile both sides of the road. Between uh, Bungie and Neo Show.
Okay.
And we we received our mini excavator with the uh tree attachment to eat trees brush and it's been, we got it yesterday. All the equipment has changed hands and we are currently working there behind Hales and Tosteroots pond on that stretch of two seventy fourth, cleaning all that brush back so we can.
Tree hog instead of brush hog.
Yeah, so we can uh, hopefully get the ditch lined and get it back to where it's safe. And uh, haul and hayite. Right now I'm working on signs and Garrett's back at the uh, inventorying the tubes. So the Ottawa Road Project, the road is open for now. Uh, they've got a few things they've gotta do. And then it'll be like the middle of April before the asphalt shows up.
Yes.
And then uh, bridge on Independence Creek. We have the agreements to sign today with them.
That's the Indian Head.
No, Independence, this is the one where we're doing the repair from the wreck and the deck and the deck. That other one, I just got some information on today. So we're still moving forward. The engineers are doing that and Gabe is working on Ottawa Road to to get that done. So we've got quite a few projects going on and everybody's pretty busy.
Awesome. And we've already approved this project. We just need.
Yeah, we just just.
So we have two copies for the county, one for Swami and one for Comanche Construction. So I'll uh sign and you guys sign.
They opened up um, south down there. Is it, the guardrails in yet? Is that after the asphalt?
No, we, there is no guardrail. Yeah, because of the slope and everything.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, we changed it.
Yeah.
You know, it's got a lot more. So, I mean, we can put guardrail in, you know, but uh, when I talk to the engineer, we didn't, we don't necessarily have to.
Different states and places where some places would be guardrails, other places there's not. It's no consistency.
Well, and then it it all, uh, there wasn't any on that planned project, so.
Yeah.
And then I'm still getting questions about culverts that people are, can't get their equipment through and all of that. What we're gonna do or how we're gonna do it. And right now, we have a, Garrett went and looked at the one on three thirty fourth road east of Hamilton the other day and took pictures and it's still still servicing the road. The farmer wants to put in a new fence. And uh, I don't know if we, if we're gonna move forward with talking to them, if they wanna pay for part of the expense when it's still servicing, I don't know.
Is it, they're gonna change the slope or something that they can't put their fence in?
Well it will help, but I also think that has to do with getting equipment through.
Well, but I'm saying that he's delaying putting a fence in.
That's what he's telling me. He's told me this three years in a row.
So what on my, what I'm saying is, is he afraid that's gonna change the slope or?
Well, if we put it, if we put a a pipe in.
It's gonna widen it.
And widen it out, then it'll be easier to put a fence across the road. This has to go to the clerks. So but those are discussions, those are discussions that we have to have, you know, it's, we're we're having it, we're having them everywhere, you know. And we've been on this discussion, how we're gonna handle, what we're gonna try to do to handle, and I don't know.
Well, I think.
Situation.
To me is, we we don't have an endless budget to just go out and replace a a covert or a bridge that is stable. I mean, it's it's not, and by attrition sometime when that gets to a point when it is unserviceable, we have to replace it. We go do it to a higher standard, but we just can't. Especially with as many failing structures that we have, we can't start choosing non-failing structures to to go to.
And and right, a lot of the old concrete boxes are in bad shape. Uh, but this one isn't as bad as some of the other ones we have.
Well.
I'm not saying it's in great shape, but it's, the condition isn't as poor as some of the others. So, but that's just, it's a daily thing. We all know it. I just wanted to let you know uh, that these things are are coming to us and we talked about signs. Uh, we found a device this morning and we did some research. Or uh, on one type of post is sixty nine dollars a piece and the other one's eighty nine dollars a piece that will fold over. So we may be buying some of those and trying those out on some of these bridges where they can't get across. They can actually push the signs over, drive through and stand them back out. So that's.
It's a pin in or something.
I'll send you guys a picture, uh, possibly a short video of how it how it works and it's, you cut your post short. And then it bends over. It's got a spring in there and a and a bar that slums over and then when it pops back, then it locks it back in place. So that's something that we will probably uh, get maybe several of them and try them and see how they work out. Because otherwise, you know, if if we've got two hundred dollars in a sign, by the time you go out and put it in the ground, fix it, do all that every time we go out there, maybe it's worth trying in some of these situations to see how it works. Try this. And if it saves us two hundred dollars or they pulled the sign out, throwing it on the ground. It's a lot simpler. I know that Jefferson County uses them. Uh, I talked to to him and Emily talked to them today. So it's.
I would be curious, um, we put two on each side of it, correct?
Alright, so if it's a, if it's a bridge with a concrete walls on the side, there's supposed to be four.
Two.
Two on each side.
So um, and we had one that constituent was inquiring about, correct? So it would be interesting to me um, to put two breakaways and then to do the conduit like slide on the other side and work with them to say, okay, these are the solutions and let them test it and say, you know, for feedback. Because it stinks to spend more money to get.
Well, I can tell you which one they're gonna like the best.
It'd just be neat to get their.
Right.
You know, get feedback.
And some of them.
At the end of the day, we want them complying and using him.
Right, because they they understand, they have to understand that we have uh regulations that we have to abide by. All the the wooden structures, the old ones are supposed to have one on each corner or and most of those are laying in bitches and and everywhere else. So that's, that's something that we've, we've gotta try to get a solution that'll work for everybody. It saves the county money if we're not tearing them up. And they're not losing. So and then we're gonna start moving the, the uh, weight limit signs further away from the bridges. So that they're not a, they're not a problem, yeah. So, but that's about all we have. I mean, we're just still working on, just still working every day. Working on budget and everything else, so.
As far as you pull up.
Yes, we just hired hired uh another one. We're in the process of hiring another person and one will be full. So as of now, I know, you know, there's possibility of one leaving, but it's just needing needing a better paying job is all, but everybody else seems to be okay.
Nice.
So.
Okay.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm bumping up to an executive session ahead. That way we have time. Because we have twenty minutes until our next presentation with Priya. So we're gonna do um, non-elected with finance, HR and commission for twenty minutes. And Jody's coming down. Finance, HR, Commission, twenty minutes.
And is Jody supposed to be in this one?
Yeah. Yes, Mark Finance, HR Finance and. Cause I was like, I never.
Sorry.
Board of County Commissioners, retested to executive session at ten forty eight, AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel.
We can do twenty five minutes. We have time.
As allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session in twenty minutes.
Twenty five.
Twenty five minutes in the commission room courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners, HR and finance.
Say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
So the VPN keeps kicking me off. I can't stay connected. Are you guys still connected, alright?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I have got them right now, but thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Very good, thank you.
Alright. Alright, we are back in open session. Uh, Commissioner Rebus will be right back and then we'll be ready for you, Priya.
So this second bid, I just got this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Um, so we were interested in purchasing key fobs for the second floor. For district court, um, I believe there's seven doors that need key fobs on them, um, Brian. And the wire nuts, um, gentleman and I, we kinda went through the floor and kind of picked out which doors we want. Um, we've kinda had some issues with people just coming in, we have put signs up that say employees only be on this point. Um, that's been a real issue, um, for a while now, so I think we are to the point where we need to have key fob access only. So, I was wondering if there is enough funds in the ARPA money to purchase those. Key fobs. Um, I believe a door would have, and Brian can correct me, a door would have to be inserted in the hallway. That goes into Judge Sontag and Joni's office and there would be like an intercom there, a video intercom. If an attorney or someone from the sheriff's office needs a search warrant signed, uh, judge and Joni can see who's at the door and they can buzz them in. Um, if they need to talk to them, so that was another thing, and then on, um, the clerks, let's see. West office, um, that door is currently open all the time that we are open for business. And anybody can just walk in there, they can walk through the vault, we've had that issue too. Um, so, we were wondering if we could have, kinda like what the county attorney's office has at the moment. Just keep that door locked at all times and then, um, Barbara Denise who sits by the, the door can see who's there and we can just buzz them in. Um, times are changing now and we don't know what's going to happen. And safety is my number one priority for myself and the clerks and the judges, and I think it's time that something needs to be done.
Could that be the last office you was just talking about? Have like a vest of bill or I don't know how you call it, like a county attorney's office did where they could just do business, like step in. But then there would be a dwarf to buzz employees on in, but they could do business.
Could be identical to.
I, I didn't know if that would work out.
And that's possible too, um, we do have a swinging gate, it's not put up yet. Um, that's obviously not gonna stop somebody if they really wanna do something, but. Um, that is what the county attorney's office has, that's very, we could, I am okay with that.
Well, the only reason I say is because once they're both in, then you still have the main office.
Yeah, and, and I mean, that's not really gonna stop them from doing anything, but. A lot of times we get phone calls, if they're irate, then they come up, then we won't let them in, so that's kind of the thought process behind it, but. Um, the fact that if we have like what the county attorney's office does have, they can just step right in there, do their business and come out, that would be fine.
It's just an idea.
Yeah.
That's awesome, so to answer your question, um, we had allocated a hundred and one thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents to courthouse renovations. Um, we had thirty earmark for the appraiser remodel, so we have a remaining currently seventy-one thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. So, taking care of your two estimates here, we would still have forty-five thousand seven forty-two eighty-two remaining. Um, I'm all about safety and security of, of people, so.
Thing with these estimates is they don't include the vest of you and they don't include the door. So, you're looking at a little more, you're, you're probably pushing thirty, thirty-one thousand total.
Are we gonna save a little money on appraiser, is that number still about right?
We're gonna save a lot of money on that.
Yeah, I was up there yesterday, it's amazing what he's doing.
So, another question, because when we originally talked about the fobs, we talked about, um, doing them in bulk order so we could save money.
And we did on the last one.
Can we do, um, the, because it says on here that Shelley's also possibly interested on the third floor, can we check with her? If she is, do a bulk order so we can save money and go ahead and include them, that way everyone in the courthouse is taken care of, um, that wanted. Okay, I just think it's smart to do it all together instead of piecemeal here and there.
Okay, I got a question, um, so with all the remodeling plans for the court up there eventually, um, I'm sure it's gonna be phases. My concern is we buy seven fobs here and Shelley needs what, two or three? So, then we remodel and now we only need, so these ten, we only need five. So, I guess, you know, they're easy to move.
Basically, yes, but basically, everything that you do on a remodel, you're still gonna have the doors. I mean, we're not talking about locking down the judge's door, we're talking about entrance doors, so they would still be the same door.
Okay.
Uh, even if you flip flopped whatever, whatever they're talking about up there.
Cause we don't have that floor plan really drawn out yet.
I think this is, uh, one of those things where if we were lucky enough to get a door fob left over. You know, from there, then we bring it down here somewhere.
Okay, so. Two years ago, well, we got these six fobs laying here, you know, that was a great way to spend money.
Wouldn't want that at all, but one would be, you know, they're, they're movable.
Sure, as long as they're movable and we'll probably have use of eventually, I'm all in.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I think this is a great use of funds and, um, okay. So, I would look for a motion to approve, um, a purchase order in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. To wire nuts, um, for installing two intercom units, um, as presented from. Free, uh, the district court clerk. Yep, and to be paid out of our courthouse renovation line item in our ARPA funds. Do you have a motion to approve? It's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye. Passes three to zero. I would look for a motion to approve purchase order in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and ninety-three cents. Um, to wire nuts for the fobs as presented from our district court clerk. Um, to pay that, be paid out of the courthouse renovation line item of our ARPA funds. Um, the one thing I will mention on this is I would like them to go ahead and look at the third floor, try to do purchasing power to. You know, we're approving this amount, but if you get them cheaper and can include a couple more for the third floor, I think that's, that's worthy. So, do I have a motion to approve this purchase order? Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
These really aren't POs, do they need?
You won't have to come back now, like we've approved it here and then we'll sign them at the next meeting and then. We have the, we have the information we need to transfer onto the purchase order sheet and we'll sign them and get them, get them in the works.
Another question, Brian, do you have enough, uh, almost called used doors and stuff to do that anyway?
So, yeah, that, that will have to be a new door. So, that's what I'm saying, by the total of that, and I can come up with that, I just didn't know where we were, so we didn't do anything on that. But we'll get you on the purchase order, we'll get you another purchase order for a door and making the vest of you.
Try to match it in, but came and all that.
Awesome. Thanks for bringing in information to us and. Thank you.
Brian?
Yes.
Just a second. Mark say anything to you about, uh. We were talking about putting some tables and I thought that there were some desks like these that were left over.
I think we've got two, maybe, I know one for sure.
And I thought they would match, you know, if we could put them in here somewhere, so I didn't know if you'd said.
Very close, where do you want them though, is what I need.
Either right in front or maybe?
One, two together and just put them across there.
Uh, they're easy to move around, right?
The only thing, is there access to electricity, because sometimes people plug in, is there any way of doing that? Cause I know before we had a desk setting under the claw, so people could plug in up there. Well, I guess they could.
Just get a long thing.
Alright, well, I just, that's the reason I was asking is because if it would put it somewhere else that they could plug into.
Anything's possible.
We know with you, Brian, that is.
So, we have five minutes until our next executive session with anyone who needs restoration.
And I'll get to the table a bit here, I just did, I meant to ask you where you want.
Well, I wasn't for sure that you had been. Dealer. I was thinking on that, uh, changeover with Senior Village, should we let the globe know?
Yeah, I'm, I'll write something up, I think after Thursday.
I will, I think we went inside to see what.
Yeah, they were gonna write a press release, remember when we talked about it, so when we get up there, we'll ask him, they probably have something that evening.
Well, I meant, so they would be there maybe at the, the changeover or, you know, once the press release that was happening, but. I wondered if they actually knew if they would wanna be there.
Oh.
I don't know, I, I was just thinking, uh, yeah.
I can reach out to the gentleman and see.
Yeah.
Just say.
Might be a night out.
Well, it is, it's kind of a big deal on that.
It's exciting.
Yeah, I can call in from Arkansas.
There you go. I mean, seriously, it'd be one. She coming on Zoom? No, she's getting online now.
Oh, okay.
She's online now. Okay, perfect. Okay. I, non-elected, twenty minutes, HR, finance and county attorney.
Repeat again.
Uh, HR, finance and county attorney for twenty minutes, non-elected.
I'll move the board of county commissioners recess into executive session. At eleven thirty AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session in twenty minutes in the commission room courthouse basement, and those. Present will be, uh, three commissioners, finance director, HR and a county attorney. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session and getting ready to schedule another executive.
Okay, I'll move the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at eleven fifty-two AM. To discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be three commissioners, finance director, HR and sheriff. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sure.
Okay, so we have, um, a little bit of time, can I move yours up? Are you okay with that? Okay, so we'll do fifteen minutes, HR, finance, commission. Fifteen minutes?
I'll move the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at twelve twenty-three. PM. To discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and the board come out of the executive session. In fifteen minutes in the commission room courthouse basement, most present will be the three commissioners, HR and finance director. Second.
It's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Is that good? Cause I'm sorry. Alright, look at us, one minute, we are on schedule, this is great. Non-elected, uh, HR, finance, IT and commission for thirty minutes.
Thirty?
Yep. Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear it, talk to us. Okay, I'll move the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at twelve forty. PM. Uh, to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be. The three commissioners, IT, finance and HR. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
Yeah, he'll take care of it right then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
We are back in open session and we have, uh, non-elected Clinton, uh, EMS, HR, finance and. We are back in open session and we have the non-elected Clinton, uh, EMS, HR, finance and commission, thirty minutes.
Slowly, please.
Sorry, EMS, HR, finance and commission.
How long?
Thirty.
Okay, we all move to board of county commissioners recessing to executive session at one eleven. PM to discuss personal matters of, of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room courthouse basement. And those present will be three commissioners, finance director, HR and EMS director.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Surprise, jump in, do it with your.
You can sure talk for just a little bit. Yeah, we are.
Are we?
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Our discussion, discussion this morning workshop about the right of ways and all that. If you read the proposed, uh, plan from Gabe, a lot of the answers are in there.
Which is what we want everybody to follow.
Right, so a lot of them ran there, just possibly are part of the. Getting the resolution from the township, that's not in there, I don't know if it needs to be or if that's just something we know we need to do. But if you guys read through that before Monday and look at it, a lot of those questions are answered. By having an engineer do it and then it tells everything they're supposed to do, how it's supposed to be done and the width of the right of way. And a lot of it, so if you look through that and read it, because I'm gonna do it again, I ran in there and read part of it. Uh, and maybe we can have, if there's other questions we have for Gabe later on, then we can discuss it. But a lot of the, a lot of those questions can be answered within that, that we were trying to talk about today.
Perfect.
Okay, so, but just, just take a look and then I'll look some more and if there's something else that. We want to do different, like, if we need to put step by step what the township has to do. In there, then we can also do that. All right. All right, thank you.
Okay, we have. Um, ten-minute attorney-client.
Oh, another. That's the last one?
Um, yes, I believe so.
Who?
Attorney-client, sorry, uh, finance and commission and, and Pat.
And you said Pat?
Uh, sorry, county council, yes.
Move the board of county commissioners recessing to executive session at one forty-four. PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged. And the attorney-client relationship is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine V two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of the executive session in ten minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be three commissioners, finance director, uh. And, uh, county council.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did I, did I miss?
Oh, I didn't know if that was.
I missed, got them all?
Yeah.
Okay. Ten more minutes?
We're extending.
Oh, sorry, ten more minutes. Make a motion that we ex- extend the executive session for ten more minutes.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
I can do it anytime on Thursday.
Yeah, he's gone, I'm gone.
Oh, I could do it, I could do it after two-thirty, or I could do it before one-thirty.
Um, you're doing the morning tomorrow or you wouldn't be happening?
I thought he said he had to do it after two-thirty.
Either AM or after.
Okay, it doesn't make many difference.
Morning for me.
Morning's better.
Not first thing, I mean.
Nine?
Nine or ten.
Nine, ten.
You're traveling, you tell me.
Ten?
Ten.
Uh, do we need twenty-four hour notice?
No.
Okay.
How approximately, how long do you think that will take to go through that? I, I would say I would plan an hour. I, I don't think it'll take all of that time, it depends on how many questions or. And. I think it also depends on if we get other, if we get other responses, if we have some outstanding questions. We get responses to those this afternoon, that may come after that. While we can.
Okay, we are back in open session, um, let's see here. Unfinished business, county counselor updates.
Uh, the tax sale is in about an hour. Um, and we only have, we've had a lot of properties redeemed, we've had, uh. Um, three come off today. Um, one. Redemption typically, the statute says it has to be done the day before the sale. Um, we got a, uh, interpretation of that from the judge today because there was somebody who wanted to redeem. We've never had any, they tried to redeem the sale before. Uh, but his, his ruling was that, that they may redeem it anytime prior to the sale. That not, doesn't have to be done the day before, so we, we've had three properties removed today, so there are only thirteen properties left on the sale. So, I don't think the sale's gonna take. A long time, but. Uh, but tax sales today. That's all I have.
At Memorial Hall.
At Memorial Hall.
Okay, um, so, executive sessions, um, we have one more executive session. Uh, HR, finance, commission. Thirty minutes.
Let's see, where's we go?
Oh, I can, before the executive session, um, so, let me. Or we did the executive session, um, I am going to. Walk through some changes in the organization, um, so our emergency management director position is now under the supervision of the sheriff. Our GIS department is now under the supervision of our appraiser. Um, I would like to make a motion, do I need a motion, Pat, to move those?
I would say.
Okay, so I look, I will make a motion to move the emergency management director position under the supervision of the sheriff, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Um, I will make a motion to move our DIS department under the supervision of the appraiser, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, couple seconds, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Um, I would like to ma- make a motion to promote Scott Howard to our I, Atchison County IT Director. Um, and increase his salary and put him on salary and increase him to fifty-four thousand annual salary, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I have a payroll status form for us to sign on that. Congratulations to Scott, I know that the organization appreciates everything that he does for us all. Thank you. All right. All right, I, uh, will make a motion to promote our EMS director Cory Scott. To a new title of chief of emergency services for Atchison County Emergency Services Command. With that promotion, um, I have a payroll status form, um, to increase him from seventy-six thousand nine eighty-two fifty-nine to ninety thousand, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Thank you Cory for everything that you do, and look forward to, uh. Watching how you've, uh, structured this new Atchison County Emergency Services, I think great things will come from it. Do you want anything that rescue was included in them? Uh, yes, so the, so the, um, Atchison County Emergency Services will be, um, a combination of the EMS division and the rescue division, so. And, uh, led by Cory Scott. Thank you. Okay. This is that.
Something else you're wanting?
No.
I'll say.
Just a big problem.
Appreciate it. Okay. Um, thirty-minute non-elected HR commission finance.
We don't need that, right?
No, he's, yeah.
Yeah.
May I go ahead and go? There are already a dozen people down there apparently.
I'll be down there as soon as I can.
We need to.
How long?
About thirty minutes, please.
Should we go and announce the meeting tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, so we will be having a special meeting tomorrow at ten AM, right here at the courthouse. Um, to sign the closing documents for Senior Village, that takes place on March first, this Friday.
Okay.
Thanks for reminding me about that.
I'll move the board of county commissioners recessing to executive session at. Two-twelve. PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-one-nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and the board come out of the executive session. In thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners, HR and finance director.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three. Okay, we are back. In the open session, I'd look for a motion to approve this week's expenses. These are the purchase orders from earlier, um, for the ARPA courthouse renovations with the courts. So, we have those.
Seven, seven again.
Yep. That we can put in the folder with. Do I have a motion to approve the expenses this week?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero. Um, public comment. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
We've been seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.